Guess we can go ahead and get the meeting started. All right, um, good evening, everyone. Today is September twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five, and this is the regular city council meeting. Uh, thank you all for coming. Um, we're gonna start with some housekeeping in, um, for the folks in the chambers. Um, so if you have a cellphone, please put it on silent or mute. If you need to take a call, please step outside. Uh, the acoustics in here are interesting, so we can hear everything. Um, there are two exits. Uh, there's one in the front by the pews, uh, the, the double doors that'll lead you straight out. Um, if you continue straight, the main staircase will be on the right-hand side. Additionally, the, uh, exit in the back, uh, of the room, there is a staircase on the right-hand side that'll lead down to the main level as well. If you need to use the restroom, the men's restroom is by the man's mayor, uh, the main staircase, um, straight outside of this double doors on the right-hand side, and the ladies restroom is gonna be right outside this double doors on the left-hand side, okay? Um, we are going to start with the pledge of allegiance, and we're gonna have our councilman Poteet do it for us. All right, thank you, everyone. Um, just some additional things. We're gonna enter our public speaker session right now, so each speaker that is called up tonight will have, uh, four minutes to speak. There's a cl- a digital clock that'll be able to gauge your time for you. When you come up, we do have a new microphone. Um, can you, if you want to turn it on, do we need to mute someone? Uh, if we wanna turn it on, you press the gray button that's there. You may need to press it a little hard. Um, when the red light comes on, it indicates that the mic is on. The mic is movable. It does have a strong magnet, so we might need to move muscles if you need to adjust it. Um, other than that, council members, I'm gonna get straight into the public speakers. Is that okay? All right, we have Ms. Melissa Cardenay. Oh, sorry, before you start, ma'am, you don't have to sit. You don't have to sit. When you come up, please state your name and your address for the record, um, and go ahead. Is the mic on?
Yes.
All right, there we go. You can speak. You can start.
Okay, so I'm just here on behalf of my boyfriend. He is a firefighter in Hartsdale, so, um, Frenchy Day is for his brother. He passed away about two years ago in a motorcycle accident, and we just have like a motorcycle event for him every year. Um, this year it's at their clubhouse, and we're just looking for a street closure permit, just for a couple of tents to, uh, be able to block the sun for everybody. And there's typically about, last year there was about seventy-five people. This year it's expected to be like hundred, hundred and fifty, and that's about it, yeah.
Thank you. Um, so what happened is all the speakers speak first, um, and then the city council members will respond, so you'll have to wait till the end of the speakers to get a response from the council members.
Okay, should I turn this off?
Uh, you can leave it on for the next person. Thank you. All right, we're gonna call up, um, Mr. Christopher Gold. Okay, come back to him. He's online. All right, we'll come back to him. Uh, Mr. Pastor Richard Garner. Okay, we'll come back to him. Uh, Ms. Karen Witherspoon. We have her comments. Awesome. Uh, we won't read them into the record. Uh, that's, uh, not how we do it, but each council member will receive a copy of it, uh, later on. Um, and Ms. Toni, uh, Gemless. No problem. Antoinette, can you turn the air for us, please? Thank you.
Thank you, sorry.
A clerk, clerk, clerk. It doesn't, but it, it might take a few. Okay.
In the meantime, maybe we could look at the pictures and the documents I handed out?
We're gonna wait for the air to cut off, so she suggested in the meantime, look at the pictures and the documents that were handed out. And it said to off, not lower. No worries. Just making sure we're on the same page.
Gives everybody a chance to just peruse those photos?
Awesome. You can proceed.
Thank you for looking at those pictures and the documents. Okay. It's come to our attention that nearly every council member, along with Mayor Sean Patterson Howard, has personally witnessed the turmoil and chaos our neighborhood constantly experiences. While we have shown patience and respect toward our neighbors at twenty-two Brookfield Road, the situation has only worsened each week. Since March, we have raised our concerns, yet they've been ignored. After each appearance at council meeting, there may be a brief, one-day improvement, but the pattern of disruption quickly returns. Despite the steady increase in attendance at this site and the illegal addition of a permanent structure to accommodate more visitors, there has been no meaningful effort to address the resulting parking and traffic problems. Our review of FOIL documents and applicable building codes confirms a lack of compliance. Site Plan Resolution Number S ten, one zero zero seven, item seven, which is in your document, states, "The applicant shall make a good faith effort to pursue alternative off-street parking sites with Sinai Free Cinnabon, the Sunrise Facility, and with the Mount Vernon City School District for parking to be utilized at Mount Vernon High School." This has never occurred, except for a few days this summer. The resolution also outlines off-street parking and loading space requirements. It explicitly requires that churches and other places of worship must provide one parking space for three seats, plus one space pro- per one hundred square feet of floor space used for additional public assembly. Why, then, are the safety and quality of life of Northside taxpayers in Mount Vernon being ignored? We have approached the Aman and the president and the leaders, and the response is sell your house to us. Many of us have been harassed when simply trying to reach our homes. We have yelled and yelled at, told to move elsewhere, had drivers spit on the ground, wished us harm, and forced to endure cars driving across our lawn and blocking, blocking our driveways. And you have seen the photographs, and we have movies of this. We are calling for a sustainable solution. We expect building codes to be enforced. We need to know that our tax dollars are being used to protect our safety and preserve the peace of our neighborhood. Would any of you wanna live in these conditions? We do not know who is visiting or who is attending and why they are parking still in illegal zones and why we cannot get to our homes. What are the next steps? We need to explore options. We need to reach out to the state and potentially pursue legal action. We want our homes back. We want to be safe. Don't wanna be harassed. We don't wanna be mocked, and we love our neighborhood. Oh.
Thank you. Yeah, well, so I hope you're saying that in a positive way.
I'm not sure what you're talking about. Regardless, thank you, and I hope that we can come to some solution, because it seems like we're getting nowhere, still going through this horrible, horrible situation.
Thank you. As a reminder, folks, when you come up, please state your name and address for the record. Also, please, uh, make sure we're addressing council members, and when other folks are speaking, please don't, um, address them as they're speaking. Uh, the next person that I'll call up will be Susan Risen. Thank you, ma'am. Can you say that in the, in the mic for me, please?
Red light is on. Susan Rose Quagga, over twenty-three Carwool Avenue. I've lived in the city for forty-seven years. The slogan that's listed on, on pieces of paper that come from the city states that this is the jewel of Westchester. Well, I hate to tell you, which should read, "The tarnished jewel of Westchester." Jewels glow, sparkle, and glimmer. Not this city any longer. Mount Vernon is like federal government. We have a, an executive branch, which is the mayor. We have judicial branch, which is the lawyers, and we have a legislative branch, which is your job, city council people. You are the one who oversee the workings of the Department of this city, and you are the checks and balances that keep it going. You dropped the ball. I'm coming to you after waiting seven and a half months for a permit that I do not need in any other city in Ma- in Westchester. I need a permit to put in replacement windows in my home, and I can understand if I was using a cheap company. I'm using Marvin Windows, and I'm spending a lot of money and waiting a long time to get this permit. Also, why did the commissioner get a raise a little over two years ago of forty percent when the, our building department is rated the lowest in all of Westchester? We are the worst. DPW, I'd like to know why the council agreed to take money from two lines of the DPW budget last, with, last month. Twenty thousand dollars you took away from maintenance of streets? Sign maintenance. I'm waiting to have a sign put on the corner of Carwool and Rayner. It's been gone for ten years, and nobody has put, has replaced that sign, okay? You took money away from the DPW for Christmas decorations. You didn't tell me that the city is spending twenty thousand dollars on Christmas decorations, while streets are not paved and sidewalks are broken? That doesn't work. Second part, there are dead tree stumps and dead trees all over town with branches falling, trees wrapped in pink ribbon, and nothing's being done to remove them. The trees are cut down, the stumps are left. That's not very attractive, okay? Um, the comprehensive plan, which is now, I'm told, called Envision Mount Vernon. Do you want me to think about Mount Vernon like it was? Or do you want me to think about a warning for what it's going to be in the future? Okay, one of the parts of the Envision Mount Vernon Plan is to improve our housing and move from one-family house to two- and three-family houses. I certainly hope you don't agree to do this. If, come and look to see the area that's involved with that. Part of this also is the fact that the tax lien sales are going to be starting soon. Isn't that convenient that the Envision Mount Vernon Plan, with the increase in housing, with the tax lien se- sales coming out? Who's gonna buy these houses? Hmm, I wonder, and what's the connection? Hmm. Conditioned parks and roads. There's a GoFundMe page, okay, that's to fix, to pay for two bridges in Hunts, in Hunts Woods, and by the way, it is H U N T apostrophe S Woods, because it belonged to the Hunt family. So when you write it in your paperwork, get it correct. That's only one mistake that was made. You invited a consultant to come in to look at the roads and conditions in town. Well, the consultant, okay, my time is up. Thank you.
Um, gonna move on to Christian Raftapool. All right, thank you. Uh, Elena Raftapool? Elena, sorry.
Good evening, hello to everyone. My name is Elena Raftapool. Um, my address is eighty-five Southfield Road, Mount Vernon, and I came here with intention to tell you a few things which are really disturbing to me, and I think for everyone in our community. With, uh, all my due respect for the Muslim community, for these ladies, and for everyone, I would like to tell you that I'm a little bit disturbed than in Fridays. I have so many people in front of my property, and if happens that we have an emergency, it's very hard to get out from the house. It happens to me approximately eight days ago. I have an erratic heartbeat, which was diagnosed after that, being a heart attack, and to tell you the real truth, I call it emergency, EMS, they could not get immediately. I had to wait for two or three hours. For the grace of God, happens that it was resolved, but I hope nobody should go through that. And this problem should be absolutely resolved, that or security for our safety, and another thing for our security, and I insist that there are people around the lateral side of the house, in front of the house, and they should never be. I mean, we have a very nice place to live, a very nice community, and I hope every, everybody is able to understand that. Okay, thank you so much for giving me this possibility.
Thank you. Um, next up, I'll call Marie Rizzo.
Hello, my name is Marie Rizzo Theoffi, and I live at seventy-two Brookfield Road. I have lived here for over forty years, and I would like to discuss the traffic situation with the Westchester Muslim Center. If you are familiar with our neighborhood, you would know that the streets are very narrow. There are no sidewalks. There are congressional prayer services every Friday, held at twelve noon until approximately one thirty. There are cars parked on every available street and space in the neighborhood. Often, my driveway is partially blocked, making it difficult for me to pull into or out of my own driveway. If the congregants park and then walk in the street to get to the center, there is literally no room for a car to pass or drive to their home. And if there is an emergency, such as a fire, or someone needing an ambulance, there is no way that an emergency vehicle would be able to get through. I appreciate that our Muslim neighbors wish to worship together, and I would never want to stop them from parti- practicing their faith. But is it possible to find another venue for the Muslim congregation to park? Perhaps they can park at another lot and have some sort of shuttle service. At a minimum, the Westchester Muslim Center should be required to hire police to manage the flow of traffic and cars on all weekly and holiday services. The taxes that we pay are tremendous, and this should not be happening here. I'm sure that our council can come up with a solution that works for both the residents and the Westchester Muslim Center. I thank you for your time and consideration. Let me just say one other thing. Because the same issue is going on for a very, very long time, if there is no resolution, we will have no choice but to con- contact our local media. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Linda Finn?
Hi, sorry, this is daunting. Um, my name is Linda Finn, and I live at fifty, fifty-three Southfield Road. I think that, um, we've already heard some, the issues of so- of, um, congestion in our area.
Can you put the mic where your mouth is?
Sorry. This is scary. Um, I think that a big emphasis in our community is fostering good relationships with our neighbors, and I think that our community is trying to do that. However, it is frustrating with the illegal parking that happens on our streets. Um, it is difficult and unsafe for pedestrians to walk safely. Um, there are no parking signs that are on certain streets that are, that are being blocked or parked in front of. Um, there are certain, um, intersections where you literally cannot see oncoming traffic or pedestrians, and for the safety of, of all, you know, local residents and, and neighbors who are coming into the, to the congregation, I feel like there has to be a solution. We've, you know, there's been some, um, recommendations, another that I would just like to add is that, um, that many of the signs in our area, the parking signs in our area, or no parking signs specifically, are dirty. Some are confusing as to which way the arrows are pointing and what parts of the roads should not be blocked. Um, and another issue that I have found is that there are stop signs in our areas that don't have, um, painted lines on the roads, which makes it difficult for drivers to see, but also, um, for Parker, uh, drivers to also see wa- the dis- the proper distance that they're supposed to stay away from the stop signs. And when that happens, when any resident or is parking too close to the intersections, it is dangerous, and it's unsafe for, again, not only the driver to make a safe turn, but also, um, any residents who might be walking, um, in the area, or any pedestrians, sorry, who might be walking in the area. Um, I'd like to personally offer my time to either meet with city officials or walk the neighborhood to point out some of the signs that need to be addressed. Um, and I think that, again, I'm just happy to help and try to solve the problem so that everybody is safe and feels welcome, um, coming to our neighborhood and, and living in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna go back to Christopher Gold. Has Christopher Gold joined us inside of the chambers? Has he joined us online? No. All right, I'm gonna go back to Pastor Richard Garner. Has he joined us in the chambers? Has he joined us online? All right. No problem. Uh, we, I saw protocol. We have to go through the names twice. Um, Karen Witherspoon? Is Ms. Karen Witherspoon here? Got you. Ma'am, I understand. I got you. I just gotta go through as part of protocol. Um, all right, and then Mr. Christian Raftapool. All right, so that concludes the speakers who have signed up for, tonight. Um, if council will allow, I would like to break code, protocol before we get into our responses. We... Uh, Reverend Garner? Richard Garner? That's who we're talking about? Oh, I thought you had a service, sir. You can come. You have four minutes to speak. Please state your name and your address for the record.
Uh, my name is Richard Garner. My address is fifty-six Overhill Road, Mount Vernon, New York. Good evening. I'm here to to ask the help of the city council and government to help us in our dilemma on, uh, Overhill and the other parts of this, um, our neighborhood. It's not one against the other. We have a problem. We have a dilemma, and we're asking the city to help us. It's not us against them, them against us. We just have a unsafe situation on Friday sometimes, and we need some kind of help to, um, try to solve this situation. I don't know how, um, we can do it by getting both of the parties, what can be done, but sometimes during the time of, um, the, the time of prayer, the neighborhood is very, very crowded. The street is almost sometimes impassable. And so all we're doing is asking for some kind of help. This has been a long time. I am a resident of Mount Vernon. I was born, raised here, went to school here. I taught in the school system, pastor of a church, so I'm in no eyes against any, uh, congregation or religion, but I'm saying that we need to kind of fix this. I'm a resident, fifty-six Overhill Road, for thirty-four years, thirty-four years. The problem has gotten a little bit worse, and again, we just need guidance on both sides of how we can work out a feasible and workable solution or whatever. And so I'm asking the city to come and help us now. I have heard on different, um, at different times that...
Uh, Pastor, give me a second. Pause this time, please. Ladies and gentlemen, please, uh, no talking in the audience. As I said, we can hear everything up here clearly, so I wanna allow his time and give him the respect, uh, that he deserves. Please continue his time.
Yes, so I heard that they were trying to work together. I don't know what has been done, but we just are asking for some kind of solution to help with our dilemma. And so, again, I am appealing to city councils and those that are in charge to give us some kind of help and assistance. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, council members, uh, as I was saying, um, if you'll allow, I'd like to break protocol. I know I recognize that a lot of the residents from, uh, the Southfield and, uh, in Brookfield area were coming in, and personally asked the Director of Constituent Services to come in to address what exactly the administration was doing, um, what resolutions they've been able to get to, and how we move on from here. Um, if it's okay with you all, would like to bring him up. Uh, Director Crump?
Good evening, council. Director Eric Crump, Director of Constituent Services. Um, and in addition to all of the testimony you heard already from the residents who live in the area, uh, I did ask members of the Islamic Center themselves to be here as well, uh, as they've been part of this, this process moving forward. So, uh, we've responded to numerous ongoing complaints, the same ones you've heard for, for months and months and months. Uh, at that Friday Juma prayer, the, the neighborhood does get very, 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 very crowded. Uh, this is one of the largest Islamic centers in the region, and people travel from all over to come here. Uh, and walking around the area, we did some tours and walks throughout the summer when the initial complaints were coming, not the initial, this new initial round of complaints coming in, because they've had these complaints for, for years, as they've said, um, and did some walks to see how crowded and how bad the area was. Uh, also did those walks again over the past few weekends. Uh, this past Friday, there was two hundred cars parked on the streets in every single one of these blocks, all up and down, uh, Brookfield, Westfield, Southfield, Elmsmere, Pasadena, every single one. Uh, then the narrower streets in that area, uh, it's already signed and, and, uh, marked one side of the street only parking, but every single spot that was available inside there was used all the way up to the corner. Some cars even parked on the corner itself, which is illegal. It's supposed to be fifteen feet from every curb, uh, but they were parked... feet from every curb, but they were parked on the corners inside there. On the larger, wider streets, Monterey and Pasadena and everything else, they were parked both sides of the street, completely filled up, spilled out from that one central neighborhood, even over across Columbus into Carwall as well, we saw some over there, across into Sheridan as well. So it's a huge, serious problem. The mayor and I and some other city staff people met with the Islamic Center over the summer to discuss the neighborhood's concerns and say that we have to find a long-term solution to this. There are parking lots that are available at the school district and at the Sinai Free Synagogue, which are a few blocks away as well, that are vacant during this time. The only real pinch time historically, and correct me if, you know, I'm wrong from the neighborhood, is really those Friday prayers. There's other services that happen during the week, but they're not nearly as crowded, they're not nearly as big of a problem. It's that Friday afternoon prayer block, which will vary between noon to one, or one to two, or two to three, depending upon the time of the year. But that's the biggest pinch and crunch. And at those times, the Sinai Free Mosque, I'm sorry, the Sinai Free Synagogue parking lot is vacant. We toured that a few times, and that's a possible partial solution to the issue. The high school parking lot also is used during the summer and unused during the school year, unused during the summer. But there are still some spots available even during the school year that can be used there. So we have encouraged the Islamic Center to reach out to these parking lots and see if they can negotiate some type of a fee or a borrowing or some sort of structure so that the residents can use those. But ultimately, it's a behavioral issue of understanding that we can't fill these neighborhoods up the way that they've been filled up. The Islamic Center told us that they have instructed their parishioners, their worshippers, to not overcrowd the neighborhood as they have been doing, but they're struggling to get that change happening. When I was out there this past Friday, like we said, all the Brookfield was already filled up by one forty-five, one thirty or so for the service. And this was a larger service than normal. This, there would have to be a funeral that weekend, and so it was a more packed service than normal. But there were already four or five cars double parked on top of the cars single parked on Brookfield. In response to the concerns, we have asked MVPD to come out and ticket cars that are parked illegally, cars that are double parked as well. And there was an MVPD officer there on Friday, putting tickets on the five cars that were double parked right at the edge of Brookfield down closest to the California Road. And four cars pulled up as we were having this conversation, and the officer told them, please don't park here, this is illegal double parking, this is a problem. And they continued to park and said, just give me a ticket, I'll go inside and I'll take it anyway. In speaking with the center, they have discussed the possibility of adding more services, spacing out the services more, trying to encourage the worshippers to not all come at that one crunch, but to have, similar to some of the other houses of worship that are here in the city, have maybe an early service and a late service and a later service, possibly two services, three services, to spread the crunch out and to encourage their residents to park further away so that we're not filling up every single spot that's available in that neighborhood. Beyond that, DPW is doing a study of those blocks in the areas to see what we have that we can re-sign. There's a possibility we might just have to close down Brookfield and make it no side of the street parking instead of one side of the street parking, especially those more narrow blocks where it's just a hazard. In addition to the nuisance of it, it's a safety hazard. We were there and observed a school bus trying to get around the corner and couldn't get through. As has been said, if there are emergency vehicles that need to access that area at any point in time, even if all the cars are parked legally, it's such a narrow block and there's so much of a crunch in there that it makes sense to change the signs on some of those streets, especially Brookfield, Eastfield, Southfield as well, to make it a permanent no parking area. We don't want to deprive the residents of the ability to park cars there themselves when they're there enjoying their home. But there has to be a change in the overall parking structure of that neighborhood because it's become untenable. So the center is working through their options of what they can do, and if they want to, if anybody from the center wants to come and speak to that, that's, you know, their right. But we're having conversations with the Islamic Center to say, how can we have more different worship periods, spread that crunch out? And people want to come and worship, and we don't want to stop them from worshiping at the center, but we have to space out the amount of traffic and volume that's in that neighborhood on those Fridays at noon. Yeah. Questions?
Council members, any question for Director Crump? Councilwoman McLeish?
So we're six months into this request, right? And I have to be honest, sitting up here and trying to mitigate this situation, I've gone by there, you're absolutely right, we've all taken a ride by there, it's not getting any better. And so I do agree with the residents that we have to mitigate this somehow, right? So that's a perfect example. Give me the ticket, I'll pay it. No problem, I'll leave my car there. We still have an emergency situation, right? So I think more than anything, I know that the administration has sat down with the mosque. I think we just have to continue to sit down with them, and they're going to have to be forced to use these parking lots. Otherwise, I, personally, for me, as a city council member, I might, I don't want to wait for the traffic study. We see for ourselves. Might as well just put no parking. And unfortunately, it will end up messing up the residents that live there, you know, unless we just do it on a Friday. I honestly think spreading out the services might make the situation worse. So right now, they have a two-hour span where, you know, that's the only two hours that is bothering them. What if it becomes like an eight-hour situation and you're into nine, ten o'clock at night if you're spreading the services? And again, I don't think it's us against them in any situation. We want to have a situation where everybody can live peacefully with each other. There are some other issues that were brought up regarding their building permits, some tents and stuff like that. I'd like to know, I don't know if you have an answer on that. There was a temporary building permit for, there was a building permit for a temporary tent and the tent is still there. I drove by there the other night, it's a permanent structure at this point.
It's my understanding that the permit was for a permanent tent because that's part of their permanent installation. It's for their summer camp that they use, it's not part of worship overflow. It's taking a slab that was there and putting a permanent tent over it so they can use that for their summer schools and summer camps and when they have outdoor activities. It's my understanding that, I don't believe it's a temporary tent, I believe it's a permanent-
Unless there's an additional building-
No, it was temporary. Unless they've submitted a recent permit, it was initially-
If there was a recent permit, I don't know.
I'll follow up with the building department to find out what the status of that is. It's my understanding from the building department that they were not, you know, out of line, but I'll see.
I know the police have been diligent and the DPW has been diligent about also replacing some of the no parking signs. So that's really the only comment I have. I feel like the administration really has to get on top of this because, I mean, you saw Ms. Raftable-
Yeah.
-had an emergency situation and it delayed her having emergency services. So thank you very much.
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
Hi, yes, thank you. And thank you for getting involved in this situation. You know, I want our parishioners of any faith to be encouraged to worship because you are entitled to worship wherever you like. However, we want to be mindful and cognizant of the people who live in these areas and be respectful of all properties, right? I did speak before on possibly utilizing the large parking lot that is at the high school. It can accommodate hundreds of cars at the high school. Is it an inconvenience to have to walk across? Absolutely. But we want to be mindful of those who own homes in the area and make sure that we're first being safe and respectful of the area because if it was our area we're living in, it would be an issue for all of us as well. So we just want to be cognizant of how everything is transpiring in the area. Utilizing the school partnership with the school, it will cost you a little money, but is it worth it? Absolutely. Because you won't incur any tickets, you'll have that parking for the time that is allotted and the time that it's needed. And I also recommend that you can possibly team up with our recreation department if you needed to have busing from the parking lot to the synagogue or whatever's needed. But these are easy solutions, but we just have to come to the table and just say, we're going to do this because we want to be respectful of one another and we want to make sure that we're all good neighbors and just treat each other kindly because we don't want to be combative with one another. We want those who live there to want to live there and be respected as they live there and those who worship there also want to worship there and be respected as they worship. So come into the table, this is an easy fix for all of us. Let's partnership with the school district, get that parking spaces, get those parking spaces that are available at Mount Vernon High School. It may cost us a couple of hundred dollars a month, but it alleviates, no, I'm saying, as a synagogue, it will cost a couple of hundred dollars a month, but it will alleviate getting any tickets at all. It will alleviate getting any back and forth headaches of any sort. So I would, if I need to step in to help you with the conversation with the school district, I will. But this is a simple fix and we just have to come to the table together and resolve this. Thank you.
Councilman Potteet?
Thank you, Council President. I'm a resident in that area. I live on forty-seventh Benita Vista Road. I first want to say I'm deeply respectful of the Muslim faith. Thank you for showing up. It's wonderful that you have that mosque that really services the whole county. For Benita Vista Road, we're further out. I can say our driveways are not impacted, but we're not Southfield, right? As you know, we're not as close to the mosque as Southfield is or Brookfield. I also see what the issue could be. If you're the Westchester County mosque, you have people coming in from the Bronx and Westchester, coming from work, rushing to make service and then running out. So I get that even if the Imam is saying, please don't do that, people are rushing in to have their prayer and then leave. With that being said, the residents in that area have every right to enjoy where they live. And if the Imam can control the members of the mosque, then we'll have to try our best. I texted the commissioner to ask him first, can you start ticketing in the area? Obviously he is. My second question was, can you start towing in the area? For residents who live there, if someone's blocking your driveway, the police can tow cars. They have that right.
Ladies and gentlemen, please, no comments.
Thank you. So if someone does have their driveway blocked, please call PD. If it happens on one Friday and if PD can't get there quick enough, then they'll be on the lookout for the next Friday if someone blocks your driveway on Southfield or Brookfield so that that doesn't happen. Again, I'm deeply respectful of the Muslim faith. I'm proud to have the mosque there. However, again, that we can't have our residents be in danger, we can't have the driveways blocked. And if that continues, I'll personally push to have the commissioner do what he can to make sure that cars that are blocking in that area get towed. One quick question. If the entire area is a no parking area, does that then allow PD to tow cars that are there? The reason that I ask is that the homes in that area are actually fairly spaced out. So most of them have ample parking in their driveways. They can park one or two cars in their driveway. So there's not much of a reason for the residents living there to have parking on the street.
Correct, yeah. When we observed on those days, once the service is done, really the entire area cleaned out and the streets had no cars on them because every single unit, every house that's over there, generally speaking, has a two, three, four car, you know, driveway garage combo. So most people are not parking on the streets, yes.
Right. Now, something else that I would mention because I live there, when there's something at the school, right? Just to be fair to our Muslim brothers, the same thing happens, right? The street gets full. So if we go down this path, the same impact's going to happen to if Mount Vernon High School has an event, they park in that area. If we go down this path, it'll be the same thing. Anyone parking there would be towed. But I'm curious, if we make it a no parking area, can then PD move forward and start towing anyone on the streets?
Yeah, so to this point, like I said, when we saw that, when we tried to respond to this issue, PD came in and enforced specifically really on those Fridays to those issues and issued tickets every place that we could currently ticket inside of the law. Everybody double parked, people parked in front of driveways, adjacent to driveways where you couldn't get in and out, on those corners where we saw those things parked as well. The bulk of the cars, though, are currently technically parked legally because on all those streets, like I said, if it's a one side of the street parking, they're using all the parking spaces available on that one side of the street. If it's two sides, they're using both of those two sides. It's the intention of DPW and PD to move forward and put up more no parking signs to restrict more of the current areas on Brookfield, on Southfield, on Eastfield that are currently legal. And then once they are marked as no parking, then we can start towing, you know, and ticketing there as well, yes.
Question or comment? In the interim, if, or since PD can tow, if a driveway's blocked, right? We should start doing that immediately. So if a driveway is blocked, as the residents in the area, as my neighbors, please call. And then PD has the right, if your driveway's blocked, to have that car towed.
And with this new round of the last couple of months of increased enforcement, PD knows to be on the alert for that, to be ready to do a tow.
It's on a special attention.
But they should start towing. Towing hasn't started yet, it's just ticketing.
I'm not aware of it. When I was there the last two weekends, like I said, I didn't personally observe any cars in driveways. I know it's happened in the past because the residents have told us that in the past, but I didn't see it personally. That's part of that new push to make sure that they're out there ticketing. But yes, they're on alert to tow if something happens this coming Friday or any of these, and they're obstructing a driveway or on a corner, anything that's outside of the current scope, they're instructed to, please call PD and PD will come and tow.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything, you good?
Good evening, everyone. I think just about everything has been covered. I've worked at that mosque, it was beautiful service the times, a couple of times I've been there, and we want you to feel welcome in our community. We just ask that the worshippers be respectful of the residents as well, and we just have to obey the parking and traffic laws. And I think a lot of solutions were brought to the table that might solve the issue. So we're going to work on it. We got to be fair to our residents, though. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Boxer. Only thing that I'll add to that is a few, actually a few things. Absolutely understand everybody's frustration, right? It's been months. We've addressed it as you, we've talked to, I've personally talked to the mayor about it. I know there are different resolutions being thrown out. Two things that I would ask, or maybe three. Councilman Potteet said, call Friday. If no one responds, call next Friday. I ask that it doesn't take two Fridays for a car to be towed, right? That's first and foremost. Second, I've been spending some quality time in the courts as of late, and I literally watched a judge dismiss every traffic ticket that we gave because there was no officer present. So if we're talking about enforcement and having people feel the impact of parking illegally, we actually have to give them a ticket, right, that is enforced. So that is what I would ask, is that we actually have someone who can get the tickets, who can go to court and represent the city so that the fine is upheld and people actually feel it. Like I get tickets are an inconvenience to go to court, but if you go to court, you walk up to the judge and they say, dismissed because officer is in here. I was like, well, I can park there again, I got a few minutes on my hand, right? So I think we really have to work on that. And I think the no parking situation, no parking signs will be effective. Another thing that I would recommend for the mosque is that there is, perhaps you look into a shuttle service that can help get some of the worshippers from parking lots that were mentioned to the mosque, right? Or a valet service so that all of that is covered. But those, I don't want to keep repeating everything that everyone else said. Councilman Potteet?
This is breaking protocol, but I believe there's a member of the mosque that would like to speak. Can we have one member speak so that we can hear their-
Is it mosque leadership or is it a worshipper?
I just saw one gentleman raise his hand. No, they did not. So that's why I'm asking if we could break protocol. It's up to the-
I'm okay with it. That's fine.
Sir?
Yeah, thank you so much. My name is Janedra Zak. I'm four houses down the street from the mosque, eighty-two Brookfield Road. And I've been living there for two years, not as much as many of our neighbors are. And I wanted to make a few comments. First-
Sorry, question for you. I got your name. Are you a part, you're mosque leadership?
I'm not the formal leadership, but I'm part of the congregates. Am I allowed to speak or not?
Can we hear from mosque leadership? Again, so that this doesn't go on all night, but if there's someone from mosque leadership, at least for me, if it's fine with Council President, if we can hear from mosque leadership.
Okay, my name is Dr. Muhammad Naim. I'm an active member of the Board of the Western Muslim Center, and currently I'm serving as a member of the Board. So this matter has come to my attention for the last few weeks, which has been intensified. And first of all, I'd say thank you to all the neighbors who've been our neighbor for some time. And we are in this area about almost thirty-eight years, and for a period is every-
Sir, I'm sorry.
... for some time.
Does someone have a phone or something playing? If so- If so, thank you. So you can proceed.
I'm very, the way I, the situation portrayed was just kind of very surprising to me the way it's like such a big drag on the neighborhood. But I understand there are some more cars in the neighborhood. And we're looking for a solution also. And thank you for City Council to help us out to all this. And in the past, Mayor's been to the mustid also with, so they offered us to go to Board of, School Board to get a parking lot at high school. And they are receptive, but they said they don't have a parking spot if school is open because they have enough cars for the students and teachers and other faculty members. So we are limited on that to go to high school during the school days. But summertime, we have permission from them to park. Every year, we actually did a month and a half ago with them and they said, come back for next summer again. So, and they then give us a permit during the special events like Ramadan, all that stuff, so we go park over there at nighttime. So we have been blessed with that, that we got some spots available. What I like to do is that the, there are some bad apples who are making the whole grid really look bad, is the police enforcement. If they come and give a ticket, let's see if the one kid said, heard that, they said, oh, give me a ticket, I'll just pay it. If he get ticket every Friday, I'm sure he'll stop doing whatever he's doing. So we requesting the police to come, give a ticket. Let's say you give thousand tickets, great, city makes a lot of money also. And we'll be happy also because now we're not blamed for anything you don't do. So, you know, so I love to work with City Council, I love to work, we love to work with City Council, we love to work with neighbors. We are here for them, we live here, they all live here and we love to be their neighbor, I'm sure they will like us eventually too. So we have been here for thirty-eight years. So, so at this time, I request that if city can come with the police and take all those people who are parking illegally, double parking, blocking the driveway, give them harshest penalty. You know, whatever, maximum penalty is like three hundred dollar ticket or four, give a ticket, give them every time ticket. A, it'll benefit to us to be security because the police cars are there, it'll be security for us also. We'll be very happy to be secured in the current environment of which we are going through right now. So we'll be happy if you give a ticket. And, you know, we are educating people, but we cannot be blamed or all the congregation cannot be blamed or be punished for the few bad apple who are actually doing it. So, you know, we will not have any objection to if you come and give a ticket to the double parking, blocking the driveway, park the both side, not allowed, whatever, give a ticket, no problem. We will not come back, we will not protest, we won't be doing anything. But we don't want to be giving us this, this image or perception that we are being targeted or you can't pray from twelve to three on Friday because you guys making noise, you guys parking illegally. You know, that, that is gonna be like kind of, you know, to us, kind of downgrading for us. That we don't want to be, get to the level where we are told, you cannot park here because this is twelve and three o'clock in the Friday afternoon. So we don't want to get there. So we wanted to work, but I think the enforcement will be the only solution where city can help us, which is I see it as a, as a member of the Board or being involved in the community for some time. And people who are living in, congregation attending us today, there are about twelve people who actually homes in Mount Vernon on North Side. And seven of them house right in that neighborhood, like just a block from the mustid. Two, three, like I said, thirty-four home down, that's just a block from the mustid. I own a property in Mount Vernon for the last twenty years. And I, I did my residency here, I almost, I said, grew up in Mount Vernon. So I have a very big feeling for Mount Vernon. I practiced in Mount Vernon for so many years. I worked in hospital in Mount Vernon for thirty years, thirty-five years. I'm involved in the city, the police and fire on their doctors. So, so I have feeling for city of Mount Vernon, I love the most, you know. So I'm gonna come back to see you in Mount Vernon, one or two back years, live back, I own house here too. So, so I love this city, we all love as a Muslim, we love our center, we love everything about it, the location, the neighbors, the.
Sir, I agree. Everyone in here, well, most people have a love fest with Mount Vernon. I think what we're trying to get to is to make sure that there's public safety in the area, right? And there's an agreement between the parties. It seems like everyone wants the same thing, right? It sounds like you want the folks to be enforced. We have that happening, we have Director Crump's word on that. In addition, even if some folks aren't parked illegally, then as you said, we may have to adjust with the street signs, say, so we'll make that adjustment. Wanted to know if the mosque is open to a shuttle system or anything like that, or valet system during that prayer time on Friday?
We are open to every suggestion. I'm gonna go back and take a look how much the other cars coming in, want to look more detail, try to find a solution for that if it's, if it is a big solution. But I don't see too much. I only see a few bad apple coming in and creating a problem. If we ticket them one, two, three, four time, it'll solve the problem. It will do a major change, actually. Get me a couple of cars, the police on that day and give them ticket. Give me, give me ticket, give them the ticket. If they're blocking any part of the driveway, give them a ticket. They will not park again.
Thank you.
You know, we will, we will not come to you or come to city or mayor and play very good to us, hold, city is very good to us, we will not come. Give them a ticket. The enforcement will do a job. It will do a job.
Councilman Gleason?
We have a new speaker system here, so. First of all, I want to say thank you so much. I'm very happy that there are a lot of members of the mosque here because I think that once you guys hear the concerns of the neighbors, you can understand and you can tell ten more people within your congregation. I think something also that would help you, okay? In addition, like, we can't always send police officers over there because they're busy. If you want to have a dedicated police officer there, we could do like what Con Ed does. Con Ed hires our police officers and they stay there. Or you could hire security. What some of the churches within the community do, Grace Baptist is one of them, they have some of their members outside the building where they worship directing people on where to go. I think that once you implement something like that and you get the membership involved, and this is, this is totally, whatever you guys could do to alleviate this situation would make everybody feel like there is a community there and not a us against them type of deal. Because I will tell you, if that was my mom and an emergency vehicle could not get through, I would be very, very upset. And this is everything that the neighbors have been coming to us over the last six months. So to me, I'm very happy that you're here tonight and I'm very happy that members of the mosque are here because I think it's very important to see, hear the concern from the neighbors there. So we've given you a couple of ideas to implement. Our constituent services is here, Erica is going to stay on top of this situation. So I just would hope that we don't have another meeting where our residents come back to us or you come back to us and a resolution has not been, not been created. So I thank you very much. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman.
Thank you, Councilwoman, but I'm sorry to give you a point.
Sir, give me one second, Councilman Thompson head.
Yeah, it's just, just an idea because I know that you worship between twelve and three, right? And sometimes if school is in session at that time, if they don't have that Friday off. We do have municipal parking lots in and throughout the city. Y'all can just find a location that works best for you and probably have a shuttle from that location to the mosque. Cause I know as a worshipper, if I came out of church and saw tickets on my car, I would be very upset, you know? So the last thing I want to do is have our worshippers have tickets on their car when they're trying to worship. So, you know, let's just, just come to the, come together because everything starts with communication, right? Start with communication and with communication. We want to make sure we're doing the very best by residents and the very best by our worshippers. So if the schools are not available, let's look at what municipal parking is available or any other business and/or facility that has a large portion of parking, a conversation with them saying, hey, can we utilize your area from twelve to three? Most people will allow you to use their area, especially when you, it's a low cost to use these areas, right? And those who drive, if you can't carpool, everyone who drives, you say you drop a dollar a day is just like an offering. You drop a dollar or whatever and then that would pay for whatever that monthly fee is. But we want to come together to make sure that it works out for our worshippers as well as our residents because the last thing I want to see is if someone going to worship and get a ticket and or towed, that would just ruin the rest of their day. So hopefully we can find some resolve other than that. That's all.
Thank you so much, Councilman Potte.
Very quickly, that I want to reiterate what Councilwoman Gleason said because there was a lot of wisdom in that statement. We can't always have police there, same thing that she said. But if you can have one or a few of your congregants perform the enforcement that PD can't do all the time, then we're all pitching in. I'm not sure if you can give us an answer now, but again, that was an excellent recommendation, so I hope that you listen to it. Thank you.
Thank you. So we, for the last few months, I would say we have some voluntary outside who place the cones on certain corners, not to park there and also direct the parking also. I think we'll work more on that. Meanwhile, we'll try to find a solution for that if the neighbors to be more satisfied. But we do need some help with enforcement. So, you know, that'll be, that really, you know, help us, plus the revenue, city will make a lot of revenue too, you know? Look, the money they'll make it, hundred bucks ticket, top four ticket service every Friday will be a lot of money, good revenue. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Sir? Sorry, are you?
I was asked to speak by the congregants. I was asked to speak by Dr. Knight, who just spoke to you. I have a very concise statement to make to you that.
Sir, I'm sorry. I apologize. All right. So we do have some additional speakers, so we're gonna go around the council members. Councilman Boxel?
Okay.
All right, good evening again, everyone, and thank you all for coming out. This is a very important issue tonight with the neighborhood and the mosque. I think we have a lot of solutions that are on the table and we're gonna work towards that going forward and please keep us engaged, you know? If we can even have a further conversation, we can talk offline if you guys have any further solutions. I think the other issue was a particular issue with the building department. I think that was Susan. I would like her to email us her particular permit issue that she's having and we'll, we'll try to facilitate that. I'm sorry, I was saying that you were having an issue with a particular permit that you couldn't get. Yeah, and we'd like to follow up with that and try to get that resolved as soon as possible. The City Council, so you can email us directly.
So ma'am, give me a second. There is, so there's no back and forth that's allowed, but we do have our legislative assistant in here, Antoinette Anderson.
She's in the back, she just raised her hand.
And she'll be able to.
She'll get your information.
Madam President?
Yeah.
Give me one second, Councilwoman Boxel.
I didn't have any more comments, it's the only person I was addressing.
I just wanted to interject. Ms. Rosenzweig, I've also asked Eric Crump, who's constituent services, to follow up on, on your issue. So he's gonna meet you outside whenever you're ready to leave, okay? Thank you.
Additional comments?
I would just say, good luck with your event on Saturday for a Frenchie Day. I think that's great. Pastor Garner, it's always a pleasure having you in the building. Thank you so much for your comments. And everybody who came out tonight, we appreciate it. I feel like we've got some movement here. I love seeing you come to council, but I hope that we don't see you come back and that a solution is made by all. Just want to remind everybody to be respectful of each other because we're all here for a purpose and one thing we don't want is to cause any division in the community for any reason. We see that all across the world right now. Definitely want to make sure that we have peaceful connections. With that being said, I think I covered everybody. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Councilman Thompson?
Yes, I do believe we covered everything with the parking. Hopefully we'll get that resolved this week and come to some conclusion. And I remember there was a statement made earlier about the jewel of Westchester and it's not anymore and how City Council has dropped the ball. Unfortunately, that's a false statement because a lot of things we don't know until you bring it to our attention. So we thank you so much for bringing it to our attention. Yes, the city is not perfect, but we are on up and up. We are doing the very best we can by our community. And you must understand that every jewel has to be dusted off or polished at some point so you can see its true beauty. So yes, we are still the jewel of Westchester. Your council persons are here. We are not perfect, but we are productive and we will continue to do the very best for our community. And the only way we can get things done is working together to ensure that everyone is safe and doing the very best that they can. So thank you so much for your input and let's continue to work together to make sure that everyone feels seen, heard and respected. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is Ms. Finn still in the building? Okay, well, if you can do me a favor, Ms. Tony, if you can have Ms. Finn contact me, I'll gladly take her up on the tour to look at the signs and I can work with DPW to see what needs to be replaced and what additional signs, because I did note that. And that should be a simple fix, the replacing of signs or the painting of the stop sign, what is it called? Help me out. The painting on the ground. Ms. Rizzo, actually you were talking about the Brookfield, got that, we were gonna make some changes. It was Ms. Rosen, Rosen, Jesus, say it one more time for me, please.
Rosenzweig.
Rosenzweig, okay. So Ms. Rosenzweig seemed to have stepped out, but I would gladly help her figure out what the holdup is with her replacement windows as the permit, as Councilman has stated. An additional thing is, Antoinette, she addressed car wall in Rayner. And I couldn't remember what exactly was wrong with that intersection, but I did write down that stop sign, okay? Okay, guys, okay, sorry. Well, I'll, Antoinette will grab it from afterwards so we can figure out what it is. And then it'll be helpful if we can identify where the stumps are so that I can give DPW that exact list and that they can work on those stumps as well. So a lot of things that, you know, she mentioned are things that are fixable, but we may not know about. One of the things, though, I did want to mention with regard to the different branches, the judicial branches, the courts, the executive branch is actually the operations of the city. So a lot of times people confuse the operations of the city and believe that that's the legislature's body. Our job is to do laws, we do do checks and balances. Our checks and balances as a council is limited. We don't have the authority to fire or hire anyone, right? We can be a pest and that's what we often do. Once you bring a complaint in, we go to the departments and we continue to follow up and we become a pest to that department. That was, that is our checks and balances. So when people come here and complain about a permit, I go to the buildings department every day to figure out why this permit isn't being issued in a timely fashion, right? So I think there's often confusion about who runs the operations of the city and who's responsible for enforcement, et cetera. Another thing that she mentioned had to do with the comprehensive plan that is on the agenda tonight for referral to the county and to the planning board, et cetera. And I did want to give Commissioner Rouse an opportunity just to say a few words because she just walked in right on time for you to address the misconception around the comp plan and the one family versus three family versus two sexes, et cetera. Good evening.
Yeah, so I'm not gonna go into detail and talk about the difference between one and three family homes. I, that's not appropriate at this time. That's for a public comment period, response to the public comment period that's upcoming. I will speak to the comprehensive plan in terms of what it is, what its intent and what the next steps are. So if anyone here, which I hope some folks have, have participated in our comprehensive planning process over the last two and a half years, we've had over thirty different outreach events in all different communities and. in all different communities in multiple languages, Espanol, Portuguese, Creole. Um, we've had senior focused, we've had youth focused, um, events as well. And one thing I always say is that the comprehensive plan is a beginning, not an end. And how we rolled out the comprehensive plan was in a phased manner. Part of that was to address, um, certain priorities and certain needs. And just to be straight, the city is fiscally getting back on its feet. And so we tried to do it in a way that's fiscally prudent, which takes a little longer, but is done in a deliberate way that addresses, um, addresses priority topics, priority areas and um, looking to work with the community to grow the city and preserve the city in the best way possible. So what the document that was just released this week, um, late last week, I should say, um, is the draft of the comprehensive plan. There will be a public comment period in response to it. Some of the comments that have been brought up is, is in regards to density. We took a very broad approach to density. Why did we do that? Is because since we're doing it in this sequential way, the next step in the process is the complete reimagination and rewriting of our zoning ordinance. And what does that mean? Is that we are going to pick apart our zoning ordinance to essentially grow with the times. There are certain, um, gaps in the current zoning ordinance and we've been addressing them piecemeal, whether it's through a zoning amendment for rezoning of a property or adding language that, um, that clarifies things because different sections contradict other sections. And there are some uses which have a definition but are not applied to any district. So someone coming in, looking to build, um, and uh, having amusement use or a health club or what a health club is, we had to clarify that. And so what we're going to be doing is, is picking that apart. In reference to density itself, you know, since we are doing the zoning ordinance, you know, at this point, we were just placing very wide boundaries of what we heard and what neighborhoods could be in the future. Most of what we are seeing is that there won't be any changes. But the current zoning that we use, as I said, is, is going out the window. And so we generally identified low density, medium density and high density areas. And in that, we gave examples of what could be considered low density. Because, you know, you have homes that are, you know, say larger, say north of Devonia, which are large and on large lots that are considered low density. But on the south side, you know, two family homes with large yards is still considered low density. And so it is not saying that we are getting rid of single family zoning. Yes, that has happened around the country. Yes, that is a strategy some municipalities have used. That is not the case here. And I just want to be clear about that. It is that this is broad area, you know, Pasadena Park was, um, identified. We are not transforming, um, council members' neighborhood into a series of three family homes. That is not what we are doing. What we are saying is that this should remain low density, but amongst low density, you know, giving us the flexibility of saying, how does the community want to see itself? Because we've heard things, um, accessory dwelling units, um, which some people are really afraid of. Some people see that as an opportunity. Um, you know, they're colloquially called, you know, mother-in-law units, um, to, to allow that. So, or just being able to convert a garage into extra space for the family. So is that appropriate in, in our communities and if so, where? So that was just kind of one example of how we are looking at that. And so, yes, the comprehensive plan is going to be a very broad um, document when it comes to density. But the only reason is because there is a next step where we're going to do a similar process as we did with the comprehensive plan, do a significant amount of outreach um, in all communities to talk about how do you want to see your community specifically? You know, we went with what is currently there, what's the real potential? We prioritize higher density around, um, transit. And that's the three metro north stations that, that we have within the city's boundaries, as well as looking for opportunities to improve the character of corridors such as Sanford Boulevard, you know, which, um, is act, you know, acts as a pass through for many people, but there's a lot of opportunity to have mixed use development there. A lot of opportunity to improve that character. And so we wanted to have that flexibility to say, you know, when we go in, when we redo the zoning ordinance, that's, you know, that's what we're setting up ourselves up to do. And that's what the comprehensive plan is, and I'll repeat it, it is a beginning, not an end. It is a guiding document for the next ten years for the city. So just keep that in mind. So when you see a certain area and you see certain definitions, it is not set in stone, is to allow for the flexibility for considerations amongst that. So I hope that clarifies it to a degree without addressing specific concerns.
All right, council members, that concludes, uh, comment section. Do you all have any additional comments you want to be? For us, let's take a three to five minute break because there are a lot of folks here, some may want to speak to council members. Uh, and we'll come back.
And whereas the City Council of Mount Vernon recognizes the invaluable contributions of Dr. Diane K. Williams in advancing climate education, fostering environmental stewardship, and uplifting youth in our community, and now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Mount Vernon does hereby honor and commend Dr. Diane K. Williams for her exceptional leadership, advocacy, and dedication to promoting environmental education and climate justice, and declares this day in recognition of her outstanding service to our city and beyond. Thank you Diane. And to my friend Marvin Church. Whereas Marvin Church has built a distinguished career in government banking, transportation, real estate, community development, housing, and energy, managing over 25 billion in real estate transactions, and serving in leadership roles including Associate Commissioner of Transportation in Massachusetts, and Transportation Commissioner for Westchester County, New York. And whereas Mr. Church has demonstrated his commitment to sustainable energy and community development through its leadership as Regional Director of the New York State Division of Community Renewal, where he oversourced $66 million in programs, as well as through his work with NYSERDA and Con Edison to advance clean energy initiatives, including solar, heat pumps, and clean heating resolutions. And whereas the City of Mount Vernon recognizes and applauds the invaluable contributions of Marvin Church in advancing environmental education, expanding access to clean energy, and uplifting the next generation of leaders, and now therefore be it resolved that the City of Mount Vernon does hereby honor and commend Marvin Church for his extraordinary leadership, vision, and service to promoting climate education, sustainability, and environmental justice, and declares his this day in recognition of his lasting impact on our community. Thank you both.
You can both come up.
Gotta come up guys.
All right, everybody. So, it looks like we have arrived at the referral session. Gonna start with the tally sheet, starting with Legislation and Public Works, Councilwoman McLeeson.
Thank you so much, Madam President. Item number one, Management Services, Department of Management Services, an ordinance authorizing the approval for the mayor to enter into a one-year support contract with Davenport Group for Broadcom's VMware Support Services on the agenda. Item number two, Office of the Mayor, an ordinance authorizing city staff to attend the OpenGov Long Island Permitting and Licensing User Group event and approving reimbursement of travel expenses on the agenda. Item number three, Public Works, Department of Public Works, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a non-binding memorandum of understanding with the Center for Economic and Environmental Partnership, Inc., C E E P, that is on the agenda. Item number four, Water Department, an ordinance authorizing attendance to the Project Facilitator training on the agenda. Item number five, an ordinance authorizing three Office of the City Clerk staff members to attend OpenGov Permitting and Licensing User Group in Huntington, New York on October 1st, 2025. That's on the agenda. Item number six, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mount Vernon, New York, honoring Brother George W. Brown, former City Clerk to the City of Mount Vernon, for exemplary service and community leadership, that is on the agenda. Item number seven, City Council, City Clerk, City Council, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mount Vernon, New York, honoring Brother Curtis Nelson Jr. Madam President, I have add-ons.
Before you get to your add-ons.
That's on the agenda.
Councilwoman McLeeson, before you get to your add-ons, what kind of service did honorary Brother George Brown have?
I said he's the former City Clerk of City of Mount Vernon.
No, I just heard you, sorry, continue.
For exemplary service and community leadership?
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Okay, sorry, did I say something else?
No.
All right, add-on, I have a few add-ons. First add-on is item number 22, Melissa Cardeney, you guys heard her this evening, an ordinance authorizing the temporary street closure and community event approval for Frenchie Day on Saturday, September 27th, 2025, honoring Michael Frenchie Boni, that is on the agenda. Um, okay, 23. Item number 23, City Clerk? Oh, that's Public Safety, sorry. Okay. Public Works, Department of Public Works, an ordinance authorizing the public release of RFQ number 8.208.25 for professional engineering and management services for the rehab of city-owned structures, that's on the agenda. Item number 28, City Clerk, Department of Public Works, an ordinance authorizing a two-year agreement with County Excavating LLC for various public works construction equipment rentals for a one-year renewal option, that is the acceptance of the bid. Yes, right? Okay, item number 29. 28 is on the agenda. Item number 29, City Clerk, City Council, an ordinance authorizing and approving the City of Mount Vernon honoring street co-naming policy, that is on the agenda. That is all, Madam President.
Thank you, um, gonna move on to Human Resources?
I'm sorry, excuse me, Council President, if we have questions, can we ask questions?
Sure, absolutely.
Do you have your mic on?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can.
So, item number 29, the ordinance authorizing the approving of City of Mount Vernon honorary street co-naming policy. There's just a few questions or comments that I have.
Did you, did you, um, did you put those questions or comments before to anybody on Council before you got here?
I did not, did not, but I have those questions then.
Go ahead, Councilman.
I didn't send them out. So, there's a three comments, section two way. I believe the person should have a connection to the street, right now that the language makes it discretionary. Second comment, I don't believe council in its own right should be able to pass a resolution. So, the first section, I think, is spot on, right? 50 signatures should be needed to move forward. I don't believe other folks sitting in the seat unilaterally should be able to do that on their own. And section six, I think council should be able to review after 10 years versus 25. But those are my comments.
Thank you, any additional comments? All right, Human Resources?
Thank you, Madam President, I have item number eight from Recreation, an ordinance authorizing the Department of Recreation to sponsor the annual Pumpkin Fest and Carving Event at Hartley Park and directing support from other city departments, that's on the agenda. Item number nine, from Human Resources, City Council, an ordinance authorizing the co-naming of the corner of Primrose Avenue and Frederick Place in honor of Stephanie Mills, and that's on the agenda. I don't have any add-ons, that's all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Thompson, gonna move on to Public Safety and Code.
Thank you, Council President. Item number 10, Department of Buildings, an ordinance to amend legislation regarding building safety inspections currently conducted by the city's third-party consultant is on the agenda. Item number 11, from the Department of Buildings, an ordinance authorizing the Department of Buildings in partnership with the Department of Public Safety to host the second annual trunk-or-treat event is on the agenda. Item number 12, from the Fire Department, an ordinance authorizing a leave of absence.
Lushion.
Lushion. Without pay for Fire Inspector Taj Bridgers, as he serves as a probationary firefighter, is on the agenda. Item number 13, from the Fire Department, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a temporary loan of a fire engine from the City of Yonkers, New York, is on the agenda. Item number 14, from Public Safety, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding between Westchester County and the City of Mount Vernon to participate in the mutual aid and rapid response plan for the police departments of Westchester County, New York, from July 31st to July 30th, 2030, is on the agenda. And item number 15 is held. And I have two add-ons. Item number 23, from City Council, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mount Vernon, New York, honoring Marvin Church for his outstanding leadership and service. And item number 24, from City Council, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mount Vernon, New York, honoring Dr. Diane K. Williams for her outstanding service and leadership in environmental education and climate justice is on the agenda, and that's all I got, thanks.
You, Councilman Potteet, gonna move on to finance and planning.
All right, thank you, Madam President, can you hear me? Number 16, from the Assessors Office, an ordinance authorizing the amendment of ordinance number 16 adopted by the City Council on September 10th, 2025, entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the Refund of Taxes Paid on an Incorrectly Assessed Property Pursuant to RBCL Section 550, Hudson Greenwich LLC 545 South Fulton Avenue, that's on the agenda. And number 17, from the Planning Department, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mount Vernon adopting a negative declaration and an ordinance amending the city code to enact legislation regarding health clubs and fitness centers in MX-1, MVWH, MVWC, NB, OBD, BCB, LI-75, LI-15, ITOD-1, and DOT-AD districts, that is on the agenda. Number 18, from the Planning Department, Department of Planning of Community Development, an ordinance authorizing the amendment of Chapter 267 zoning of the code of the City of Mount Vernon to permit and regulate health clubs and fitness centers in MX-1, MVWH, MVWC, NB, OBD, BCB, LI-7.5, LI-15, ITOD-1, and DOT-AD districts, that is on the agenda. Number 19, Department of Planning and Community Development, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mount Vernon adopting an ordinance amending the city code to extend the expiration of approvals from the city's land use boards, and an ordinance authorizing the amendment of Chapter 10 from the Architectural Review Board and Chapter 267 of zoning of the code of the City of Mount Vernon to extend the expiration of approvals from the city's land use boards from two years to, two years to 30, 30 months, that's on the agenda. All right, number 20, Department of Planning and Development, resolution of the City Council of the City of Mount Vernon designating itself as lead agency for the environmental review of the envisioned Mount Vernon comprehensive plan, referring comprehensive plan to the City Corporation Council, City Planning Board, and Westchester County Planning Board, and schedule a public hearing, that is on the agenda. All right, number 21, Department of Planning and Community Development, an ordinance authorizing Department of Planning and Community Development staff to attend the OpenGov Permitting and Licensing User Group event, that's in Huntington, New York on October 1st, 2025, that is on the agenda. And the two add-ons were called for. You want me to read them? Nope, all right, that's all I have, thanks.
Got it, um, thank you, now we're ready to move into our legislative agenda, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Boxill?
President.
Councilwoman McLeeson?
Here.
Councilman Potteet?
Here.
Councilman Thompson?
Here.
Council President Brown?
Here.
All right, Legislation and Public Works?
Thank you, Madam President, item number one, Department of Management Services, an ordinance authorizing approval for the mayor to enter into a one-year support contract with Davenport Group for Broadcom's VMW, VMware Support Services, so moved.
Second.
On a question, hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxill?
Aye.
Councilwoman McLeeson?
Aye.
Councilman Potteet?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
Council President Brown?
Aye.
Item number two, Office of the Mayor, an ordinance authorizing city staff to attend the OpenGov Long Island Permitting and Licensing User Group event and approving reimbursement for of travel expenses, so moved.
Second.
On a question, hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxill?
Aye.
Councilwoman McLeeson?
Aye.
Councilman Potteet?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
Council President Brown?
Aye.
Item number three, Department of Public Works, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a non-binding memorandum of understanding with the Center for Economic and Environmental Partnership, Inc., C E E P, so moved.
Second.
On a question, hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxill?
Aye.
Councilwoman McLeeson?
Aye.
Councilman Potteet?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
Council President Brown?
Aye.
Item number five, Office of the City Clerk, an ordinance authorizing three Office of the City Clerk staff members to attend OpenGov Permitting and Licensing User Group in Huntington, New York on October 1st, 2025, so moved.
Second.
On a question, hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxill?
Aye.
Councilwoman McLeeson?
Aye.
Councilman Potteet?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
Council President Brown?
Aye.
Was number four done?
Four, yes.
Five?
Just doing five now.
That was, did you skip?
I just read five.
You skipped four.
I skipped four?
Yeah, so that's the vote for five.
Right, I got you back.
So, what's the matter with me today? Item number four, Water Department, an ordinance authorizing attendance to the Project Facilitator Training, so moved. An ordinance authorizing attendance to the project wet facilitator training. So moved.
Second.
On a question, hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxill.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Aye.
Councilman Potteet.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson. Council President Brown.
Aye.
Question. Did we vote on five?
Yes.
Item number six, City Council. A resolution of the City Council of the city of Mount Vernon, New York honoring Brother George W. Brown, former, uh, city clerk for exemplary service and community leadership. So moved.
Second.
On a question, hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxill.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Aye.
Councilman Potteet.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Brown.
Aye.
Item number seven, City Council, a resolution of the City Council of the city of Mount Vernon, New York honoring Brother Curtis R. Nelson, Jr. So moved.
Second.
On a question, hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxill.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Aye.
Councilman Potteet.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Brown.
Aye.
I have an add-on, a couple of them. Yep.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one?
Yes, yes, twenty-one. Melissa Cardeney. An ordinance authorizing the temporary street closure and community event approval for Frenchie Day on Saturday, September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. And that is honoring Michael Frenchie Boni. So moved.
Second.
On a question, hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxill.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Aye.
Councilman Potteet.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Brown.
Aye.
Item number twenty-four, Department of Public Works. An ordinance authorizing the public release of RFQ number zero eight point two five for professional engineering and management services for the rehabilitation of city-owned structures. So moved.
Second.
On a question, hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxill.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Aye.
Councilman Potteet.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Brown.
Aye.
Item number twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing a two-year agreement with County Excavating LLC for various public works, construction, equipment rentals with one-year renewal option. So moved.
Second.
On a question, on a question, I didn't see this one. Uh, is this being procured properly?
I double-checked with, uh, DPW and this was the acceptance of a bid and it was reviewed by Corporation Council's office.
Okay, um, what's the, um, roll call?
Councilman Boxill.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Aye.
Councilman Potteet.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Brown.
Abstain. Um. Yeah.
What's your reason for abstaining?
Uh, I didn't get to review it. Don't feel comfortable voting.
Oh, item number twenty-six. City Council and ordinance authorizing and approving the city of Mount Vernon honorary street naming, street code naming policy. So moved.
Um, can I ask a question about that? I was just.
Yeah, absolutely. We should probably do it before, uh.
Yeah.
You seconded it, yeah.
Just, um, section, section three, I mean, section two, um, subsection three. Does this person have to be dead? Is that, that's a requirement to get the street named after you?
No, if you see, there's an exception unless council decides that there's exemplary service.
Okay.
Um, or, um, the other one is dead, but an exception to the two years.
Did your mic pop?
Yep, it just wasn't close enough.
And the, the signature threshold, how do, how do we come up with those numbers? Fifty signatures from Mount Vernon residents with at least twenty-five residing uh, or operating within a three-block radius.
Uh, came up from looking at, uh, various municipalities' street renaming policies?
All right. That was it.
Um, so to address Councilman Potteet's, uh, the, what's currently in the policy says that it's preferable if they have a connection to that street. Um, he wants must. Are our folks, do folks want to change that to must or we want to keep it at preferable?
What section are you looking at?
Means keep it. Go ahead, say that again, Councilman Thompson.
What section were you just referring to?
Keep two A.
I don't know. Um, I, I would like some more time on this one to review it again. Is it, does this have to be on for this, this week? Sorry, I know this little late, but.
The, I, I, I don't see any issues. I mean, if you need anything amended later, it can be amended, but this is a
All right.
A great start, uh, you know.
Okay. Um, all right, so it sounds like you would want more time. You want to change, you're comfortable keeping it? All right, um, how about the city council should make, should not be able to make a recommendation on their own? Does anyone else want to? Second, I know you need more time. Second it or you disagree.
I, I moved it forward, so.
Okay, so you're.
What was your question, I'm sorry?
He wants to say city council cannot, uh, make a recommendation for a street renaming.
I don't see an issue with that.
You want.
We should be able to make a recommendation, yes.
So that's taking care of section six. So how the policy is written now, um, if a resolution is, uh, is passed by the council, the street renaming stays there for twenty-five years. Councilman's suggestion was to move it down to ten. Twenty-five or ten for a happy medium. Any thoughts? I know you need more time.
Like I said, we can move it forward and it can be amended at any time, but I don't, I don't see an issue, um.
I mean, maybe we should even get public input on this. I don't know. I mean, it.
I didn't hear you.
I said, maybe we should even get like a public input on this. I don't know, maybe a poll or something. Or, uh, I don't know. It just affects the, the entire city. I don't want to assume to, to have all the, the, the answers is why. You know, the criteria to rename a street. What, I mean, you said this is based on like a, like a standard, what everyone else is doing in other municipalities, like the, the basis.
With it from doing a benchmark of other municipalities.
Okay.
And remember, this is a code naming. This is not.
Yes, it's not changing.
The entire street is a code naming.
So it's not going to come up on Google Maps, you're saying?
No, it wouldn't. Um, Councilman Potteet?
Is there, um, is there a reason why this has to pass this month? And if there is, I mean, I just, like, is there a?
You have a street renaming on, on Friday.
All right.
And would that not go forward if this didn't pass?
I wouldn't be comfortable voting for that if we didn't have a, a street renaming policy in place.
Right, but then question, was that street renaming done? How is that happening? If this legis, if this.
They're both, they're both on this agenda. They're both on this agenda, the policy and the street renaming.
Right, so we could move forward with the renaming without moving forward on the legislation.
And what Councilwoman Gleason said is she's not comfortable not having a policy in place.
For renaming unless we have a policy in place.
Right.
And that is something that this council had committed to from the very beginning. We had several people come for renaming. That we've, I, I mean, I compliment Council, uh, President, uh, Brown for putting the legislation together because it's coming up again. There are other people that we would like to name streets after. Uh, if you guys want to hold it, then I, I'm not going to be voting to rename any streets.
Like I said, I'm.
That's just.
So, I, I think before it, I think escalates, I think you've moved it. Is there a second? So it's clear that Councilman Boxill is not comfortable seconding it. You seconded it. Um, on the question. Roll call.
All right, Councilman Boxill.
Um, I'm going to abstain at this point.
Okay, Councilwoman Gleason.
Aye.
Councilman Potteet.
Abstain.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Brown.
Aye. All right, human resources.
Thank you, Madam President. I have item number eight. Department of Recreation and ordinance authorizing the Department of Recreation to sponsor the annual pumpkin fest and carving event at Hartley Park and directing support from other city departments. So moved.
Second.
On a question, hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxill.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Aye.
Councilman Potteet.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Brown.
Aye.
Item number nine from city council and ordinance authorizing the code naming of the corner of Primrose Avenue and Frederick Place in honor of Stephanie Mills. So moved.
Second.
On a question, hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxill.
I got no problem with this. Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Aye.
Councilman Potteet.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Brown.
Aye.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Going to move on to public safety and codes.
Thank you, Council President. Item number ten from buildings and ordinance to, to amend legislation regarding building safety inspections currently conducted by the city's third-party consultant. So moved.
Second.
Uh, on a question. On a question, I'm sorry, I forgot to ask earlier. This, uh, when the benchmark was done for municipalities, what are the costs in other municipalities?
Yeah, so they benchmarked it to other municipalities, but also too. Um, we used to have a, a fee to the fire department that's being eliminated. So it's the same fee to the homeowner. It's now all going to buildings and the third-party consultant.
So that the fire department is not charging anything?
Right, the fire department's not charging anything. So there's, there's a no net impact to the constituent.
And where does our price stand in comparison to the other municipalities?
It's similar. It's that they, at least they told me, that they benchmarked to other municipalities. So this is actually no different than what we had, except now the fee's going to the third-party consultant instead of the fire department.
Thank you. Uh, roll call.
Councilman Boxill.
Um, aye.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Aye.
Councilman Potteet.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Brown.
Aye.
Item eleven, an ordinance authorizing the Department of Buildings in partnership with the Department of Public Safety to host the second annual trunk or treat event. So moved.
Second.
On a question, hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxill.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Aye.
Councilman Potteet.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Brown.
Aye.
Item number twelve, an ordinance authorizing a leave of absence without pay for fire inspector Taj Bridgers as he serves as a probationary firefighter. So moved.
Second.
On a question, hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxill.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Aye.
Councilman Potteet.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Brown.
Aye.
Item number thirteen from the fire department and ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a temporary loan of a, of a fire engine pumper from the city of Yonkers, New York. So moved.
Second.
On a question, hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxill.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Aye.
Councilman Potteet.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Brown.
Aye.
Item number fourteen from public safety and ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding between Westchester County and the city of Mount Vernon to part, to participate in the mutual aid and rapid response plan for the police departments of Westchester County, New York from July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five to July thirtieth, twenty thirty. So moved.
Second.
On a question, hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxill.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Aye.
Councilman Potteet.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Brown.
Aye. Uh, we're going to move on. Not, just kidding.
I got two add-ons. Uh, twenty-two from city council, a resolution of the city council of the city of Mount Vernon, New York honoring Marvin Church for his outstanding leadership and service. So moved.
Second.
On a question, hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxill.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Aye.
Councilman Potteet.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Brown.
Aye.
Item number twenty-three, a resolution of the city council of the city of Mount Vernon, New York honoring Dr. Diane K. Williams for her outstanding service and leadership in environmental education and climate justice. So moved.
Second.
On a question, hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxill.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Aye.
Councilman Potteet.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Brown.
Aye. Um, going to move on to finance and planning.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, the assessors office and ordinance authorized the amendment of ordinance number sixteen adopted by the city council on September tenth, twenty twenty-five entitled an ordinance authorizing the refund of taxes paid on an incorrectly assessed property pursuant to RPTL section five five zero, which is Hudson Greenwich LLC, five forty-five South Fulton Avenue. Um, so moved.
Second.
On a question, hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxill.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Aye.
Councilman Potteet.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Brown.
Aye.
All right, moving on, Department of Planning and Community Development. Uh, resolution of the city council of the city of Mount Vernon adopting a negative declaration and ordinance amending the city code to enact legislation regarding health clubs and fitness centers in the MX one, MVWH, MVWHC, NB, OBD, BC, BLI seven point five, LI fifteen, ITO D one and DTO AD districts. So moved. Second.
On a question, hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxill.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Aye.
Councilman Potteet.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Brown.
Aye.
All right, number seventeen, Department of Planning and Community Development. An ordinance authorizing the amendment of chapter two sixty-seven zoning the code of city of Mount Vernon to permit and regulate health clubs, fitness centers in MX one, MVWH, MVWHC, NB, OBD, DC, BLI seven point five, LI seven, LI fifteen, ITO D one and DTO AD districts. So moved. Second.
On a question, hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxill.
Uh, aye.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Aye.
Councilman Potteet.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Brown.
Aye.
All right, eighteen, Department of Planning and Community Development. A resolution of the city council of the city of Mount Vernon adopting an ordinance amending the city code to extend the expiration of approvals from the city's land use boards. Uh, authorizing amendment of chapter ten of Architectural Review Board and chapter two sixty-seven zoning of the code of city of Mount Vernon to extend the expiration of approvals from the city's land use boards from two years to thirty months. So moved.
Second.
On a question, hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxill.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Aye.
Councilman Potteet.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Brown.
Um, sorry, just refresh my memory. Before, this one was already, uh, referred to the, um, county, right? This is the, um, the expiration of approvals from the city's land use boards? No?
Yes.
Anybody? You said yes? I, I can't hear you, clerk. Please stop whispering.
Commissioner Rouse? Smalina, anyone?
Are we in the middle of one?
Good evening again.
Good evening.
In regards to this item, um, in speaking with our land use, uh, staff and Department of Plan and Community Development and given the anticipation of the significant amount of applications that we are beginning to see and anticipate to see due to the adoption of the comprehensive plan and rewrite of the zoning ordinance, we want to give, uh, folks an, an opportunity to stage their projects and get their projects together and not have to in, not only incur a burden on those property owners, but on, on staff as well. A lot of our, not only planning, but especially our building staff, um, you know, is understaffed and can be overwhelmed. And with what we have in the pipeline and level of review, we feel like giving an extension of six months, um, for projects to assemble and get together, um, is appropriate because, you know, we're not just talking about um, a variance for, you know, regarding parking, you know, how many cars are in the garage? We're going, we're already seeing applications for twenty-one-story buildings, fifteen-story buildings, variety of mixed-use developments, which may have multiple levels of ownership and, and complications. And so we want to give that extra time not only to, um, have property owner have everything in order, but to give our staff enough time for review as well.
Yeah, so I, I guess my question is more so what the request is, an amendment of our zoning code, and our zoning code amendments have to follow a specific protocol, one being it has to be referred to the, the county and the planning board. I have a comment. Have we done that part is what I'm asking?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
No worries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Aye. That's my vote.
Thank you.
May I continue, Madam President?
Sure, why not?
All right, thank you. Number nineteen, Department of Planning and Community Development, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mount Vernon designated in itself as lead agency for the environmental review of envisioned Mount Vernon comprehensive plan, referring the comprehensive plan to the City, um, Corporation Council, City Planning Board and Westchester County Planning Board and scheduling a public hearing. So moved.
Second.
On a question?
Uh, so I just, uh, have a quick comment, which is, um, you know what, that I, uh, I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Roll call.
Councilman Box Hill?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason?
Aye.
Councilman Potteet?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
Council President Brown?
Aye.
All right, uh, number twenty, Department of Planning and Community Development, an ordinance authorizing Department of Planning and Community Development staff to attend the Open Gov permitting and licensing user group event. This is Huntington, New York on October first, twenty twenty-five. So moved.
Second.
On a question, hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Box Hill?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason?
Aye.
Councilman Potteet?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
Council President Brown?
Aye. Um, do we have any comments, questions, concerns, thoughts from council members? Councilman Thompson?
Yes, um, I had, I just want to give a shout out to a couple today. Um, no, just joking. Uh, but we have several events coming throughout the year. Make sure that the community, um, stays tuned and, um, you know, participate in all events coming forward. That's all.
Any other council members? All right, do we have, uh, Councilwoman Gleason?
Can we do a moment of silence for, uh, Kai Ramsey, who was a cheerleader coach who passed away prematurely?[1707.21]